All right, welcome everybody to our city council meeting. We're gonna have a quick couple of announcements and presentations and sort of a celebration we want everybody to take part in. But quickly, we have a Drinking Water Week. And Randy, why don't you guys come up and kinda tell us what's going on? And I'll give you the mic.
Thank you Mayor. Each year, the first week in May is National Drinking Water Week. And we're certainly proud to hear this designation, recognizing Des Moines Water Works for the quality drinking water that we provide to the citizens of Des Moines, metropolitan area, and our surrounding rural water districts.
All right. We have a great partnership with the Water Works and certainly they supply, as Randy just said, to our whole metro area water. We, what we think that Forbes thought was the number one drinking water in the country, right? At least a year or so ago. So, great work on the part of this that does great metropolitan work. So, the proclamation reads as follows. "Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas any measure of success in society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity, and public safety are in some way related to access to safe, reliable water. And whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend. And whereas each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our sources of water from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and all the citizens of the city of Des Moines do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st to 7th, 2011, is Drinking Water Week in the city of Des Moines. And I call upon all of our citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing safe, clean, and reliable drinking water to our public, and recognize the contributions which Des Moines Water Works utility professionals make every day for health, safety, comfort, and quality of life." Let's give these guys a break. (APPLAUSE) Wait a minute, wait a minute. You'll see this in your water bill, so.[225.12][225.12](LAUGHTER) Okay. Are we all right? Wait a minute. Person malfunction. All right, now, I'd like to have those representing the Rotary Club of Des Moines There's a very special celebration, and all of these folks are representing the Rotary Club of Des Moines, which I think is number 27. And so, we would like, who's gonna be the first? Here you go, step right up. Tell us what's going on.
Thank you Mayor County, I'm Skip Blutton, and I have the privilege of being the president of the Rotary Club of Des Moines. This is our centennial year, we are, as the mayor said, we are Club 27 out of 33,000 worldwide. We take our position very humbly, but we're very proud of it. Thrilled that we can be here and receive this wonderful proclamation.
All right, and proclamation of this anniversary, we have it read as follows. "The Des Moines Rotary Club was organized on May 1st, 1911, as the first Rotary Club in Iowa and the 27th of 33,000 worldwide. Whereas the Rotary Model Service Above South inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas over 2,000 members have joined the Rotary Club of Des Moines since it began in 1911. This makes it the oldest and largest club in Iowa. And whereas there are currently over 330 members in the Rotary Club of Des Moines sponsoring service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in Des Moines and abroad. And whereas an honorary street designation of 12th Street between Locust Street and Grand Avenue has been named Rotary Way in recognition of this centennial celebration. Now, I, the mayor of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st to 7th as the Rotary Club of Des Moines Centennial Week, and encourage our citizens to recognize them for their 100 years of leadership in building a better community." Let's give them a great big hand.[401.12][401.12](APPLAUSE) All right, we'll... Wait one, one more. All right, this week is really a special week for our city, and I would like to have our folks from Iowa Energy come forward. And we've got our league MVP Curtis Stinson and our Coach of the Year Nick Nurse. So let's...
Happy to be here. Just a quick update of where we are. If you're not aware, we're in the championship finals for the first time in franchise history. We just returned... Just returned from Texas after game one, and we were fortunate enough to win last night in a best two out of three. So, this Wednesday night, we have a chance to lift the championship trophy here in our hometown of Des Moines. We're really looking forward to it. We brought some gifts for you. Wednesday night, they're having what's called a white-out. You may have seen in the NBA playoffs a lot, you'll see the whole arena, everybody's wearing white, but we're doing the same thing. Everybody that comes to the game gets a white t-shirt with the Purple Energy logo on it, so we brought one for you and council members here, so we'll pass those out here in a minute. But thanks for having us. We're really excited and we've had a great year, and Curtis has led our team fantastically this year.
Congratulations, and I want to say a couple of words. I watched Curtis when he was playing about 30 miles north of here, and he was a fabulous player then, and we're lucky in the city of Des Moines to have Curtis be part of the Iowa Energy. And it speaks very highly that not only do we think a lot of him, but the league does as well. So congratulations Curtis on your MVP status, and let's give him another great big hand.[562.16][562.16](APPLAUSE) So, in honor of this, we have a special proclamation. Whereas Des Moines' own NBA Development League team was announced in February 2007, the Iowa Energy name and logo were unveiled on June 2007, their home venue would be and still is, the Wells Fargo Arena. And whereas the Iowa Energy have come a long way since the inception of the team, their first ever win on November 23rd, 2007, that 2009-10 squad set a new league mark of 37 regular season victories, and they have equaled that mark again in 2010-11. And whereas they are being recognized with the following stats: three consecutive NBA D-League conference championships, back-to-back seasons with 37 and 13 regular season records, the best records in history of the league by any team, franchise has the highest winning percentage of any team in D-League history, and the first finals appearance in the team history, and our league MVP Curtis Stinson, and the Coach of the Year Nick Nurse. So congratulations to the Iowa Energy on their winning season and making it into the D-League Finals, and we're looking for a great game on Wednesday, and we hope that everybody can turn out and get out there and support the energy. And now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens who have shown, I think, great support and really are rooting these guys on, do hereby proclaim the week of April 25th to 30th, 2011, is Iowa Energy Week. And we urge our citizens of Des Moines to attend the games and support this great team. Let's give them a great big hand.[678.12][678.12](APPLAUSE) This will go in the water bill too.[688.12][688.12](LAUGHTER) Oh yeah, we gotta do a shirt. We gotta do a shirt. I'll give you the proclamation. Okay. Can we get a shirt? Okay. All right, here we go. For white-out. Thank you.
I'll take the biggest one. It's your last game before the NBA on Wednesday, too. You deserve it, man. Yeah. He doesn't just show up three hours.
Now Curtis had a triple-double, what was it, last night Curtis? All right, we want to see maybe another triple-double Wednesday night, all right? All right. All right. We, we have a... All right, we're gonna bring some folks up in a minute, but our former city arborist and municipal arborist has a couple of words. Mr. Moore.
Thank you. This week, Friday, will be Arbor Day, and I just wanted to give a little bit of history behind Arbor Day. J. Sterling Morton of Nebraska City, Nebraska, on January 4th of 1872, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Ag that on April 10th, 1872, it be recognized as a holiday to be called Arbor Day. They agreed, and they planted approximately a million trees that year. On March 12th of 1874, Governor Robert Furnas proclaimed April 10th of 1874 to be Arbor Day. Eventually, it was changed to April 22nd, J. Sterling Morton's birthday. In 1970, President Richard Nixon proclaimed the last Friday in April to be recognized as a national holiday known as Arbor Day. Now Nebraska doesn't have everything going on us. I asked Leslie, Leslie, where you at? She's with trees forever, and I asked her to bring this banner in tonight. On November 9th last fall, I attended the Park and Urban Forestry Conference in Philadelphia. There were 500 people in attendance, and when I walked into the conference hall, I saw a banner similar to that, but about four times that size, behind the podium. And to show you what that means to us, because that's Bill Ritchie, who passed away two years ago, and Maggie, on Arbor Day in Grandview Park in Des Moines, Iowa. And this has been adopted nationwide as an example of a legacy tree plant. And I think we ought to be really proud of this. I see it on a lot of websites, most people don't know where it came from, but I hope you're all as proud of this as I am. I just want to say thanks to everybody in here that works on trees, we've got some people here that are gonna win awards. All the guys in orange shirts, as you can guess, they're your employees, they're the ones that maintain your trees, and be proud of these guys. These guys do a knock-down, drag-out job, there's none better in this country, believe me, I've been around to see the work, and these guys do excellent work. But with that...[906.12][906.12](APPLAUSE) With that, the city started a new award program this year under Sarah Teese, and I'll ask Sarah to come up here and help us out with this.
Thank you. This year, we started a champion tree program that was the idea of one of our tree trimmers at Yelkin, and brought it to me, and we decided it was a great way to promote the big trees that we have here in town. So we have two winners. One, they each nominated trees, one was nominated on public land, and the other one was on private land, and I'll let the mayor give these awards.
Imagine this is private?
Yes.
All right, Skip, you're up. I get to do the proclamation, I'm not Skip, you though.
This is Margie Rothmeyer. Margie is recognized for nominating a champion tree on privately-owned property. It's an eastern cottonwood, 73 inches in diameter, 106.8 feet tall, gives it a total of 291.3 total champion tree points, and it's located on the east side.
Yep, and I'm backyard.[992.12][992.12](LAUGHTER)
2945 Cleveland Avenue. The tree on publicly-owned property goes to Gavin in Geneva Klein. Would you like to come on up? I'll bet you found this tree, did you? The tree that they found is located in Water Works Park. Where do beavers go? We need to see on the road. It's an eastern cottonwood, 107.3 inches in diameter, believe me folks, that's a monster. 74 feet tall, total of 301 total champion tree points.[1070.12][1070.12](APPLAUSE)
Could we get one more, and make sure we get all both winners in here? Yeah, why don't we have you guys stay also in the spring of our forestry folks? Guys? Well, and plus, we're gonna do the proclamation. There's a little more room over here, too, so you guys can be... I would like to say that everybody in our Parks Department and our Public Works Department, they're tree supporters as well, as well as our whole city council and our city staff, as well as the citizens. But these guys are really the captains, these are the people that are out there every single day, and their job is to think about trees, work with trees, and our neighbors that certainly have found some wonderful trees, and help take care of them for their lifetimes, and hopefully so that they'll be available for future generations as well. And that's what trees and tree planting is all about. Skip, you said that Nebraska, and Hallie, I want you to know that Nebraska planted a million trees, we want at least to 100,000 here in Des Moines, and this council is kinda committed to that, and we're gonna, we're gonna make a big effort to try to get there in partnership with our residential and commercial partners. So we'll, we'll keep working on it, and hopefully with you guys' help, we'll get them planted right, so that they live another 100 and some odd years, however long that will take, so that our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids will be able to enjoy them as well. So, proclamation reads as follows. "Des Moines strives to maintain a healthy, natural environment for its citizens and guests. And whereas trees are one of Des Moines' most valuable natural resources that clean our air and water, sequester carbon, and help to conserve our soil and energy resources, provide critical wildlife habitat for numerous animal species, and help make out, make our community and the world a more pleasant place to live, work, and visit. And whereas the protection and preservation of our urban forest for the benefit of the citizenry today and future generations depends on the city of Des Moines. And whereas Des Moines has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue our reforestation and management programs toward ensuring the future of our urban forest trees. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 29th, 2011, as Arbor Day, and urge the citizens of Des Moines to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to plant, protect, and maintain our urban forests. Let's thank these great supporters."[1295.12][1295.12](APPLAUSE) Move this out of the way. What?
He says that's now paid, right?
We have some comedians in there. We'll kinda get in here. Got it? Great. Thanks guys.[1316.12][1316.12](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. I'll see you again. Thank you. Thank you. (INAUDIBLE) 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 I want to welcome everybody to our Des Moines City Council meeting for April 25th. We've had a number of awards this evening and special recognitions, and we hope that you all kind of enjoyed that. But prior to our beginning our meeting this evening, our own council member Skip Moore is gonna give us a quick message, and he's not asking for anybody to stand. So Mr. Moore.
Well, I volunteered to do this tonight, thinking I would stay with the theme of Arbor Day and trees. And over the years, when I was the municipal arborist for the city of Des Moines, a lot of us had some heartache over how to grow a tree properly. Right Don? Jeb? Anyway, I think I found a poem here that answers the question of how to grow a tree. It's called Trees by Joyce Kilmer. "I think that I shall never see a poem lovely as a tree. A tree whose hungry mouth is pressed against the earth's sweet flowing breast. A tree that looks at God all day and lifts her leafy arms to pray. A tree that may in summer wear a nest of robins in her hair. A pond whose bosom snow is lain, who intimately lives with rain. Poems are made by fools like me, but only God could make a tree." Thank you.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to take roll, please.
Kelly?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Priest?
Here.
Manapie?
Here.
St. Lee?
Here.
We still have a lot to do, and we know that. But we also understand that NRB needs to move ahead with other neighborhoods. Mostly, I want to thank the people at City Hall who have been so helpful and cooperative through this process. I had a lot to learn, and I'm still learning. Um, so I'm especially grateful for their expertise and support. I'm only going to name departments because I might leave out an individual. But from the person who answered my inquiry to the department directors have all been courteous and prompt with their replies. And I mean that sincerely. I jotted down the ones I know I talked to the most. That was the city clerk's office and the city manager's office. I want to make special recognition of community development, wherever you are, Dave, and all of your comrades. The park and rec department, police and fire, traffic and transportation have been very helpful. And I want to particularly mention Public Works. You have three great leaders in that department, in addition to their AA, who is also very, very good. Uh, I want to sincerely thank all of you in Polk County for endorsing us, and to each of you individual council members who have helped me too. Thank you very much.
Joanne, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Andy Clark. I live at 5800 Southeast State Street, and I currently serve on the board for South Park Neighborhood Association. You know, I'd, I'd like to say ditto to everything that Merle Hay said. Uh, but I do want to thank you for your consideration to move South Park Neighborhood from charter to designated status. We are proud of the accomplishments, accomplishments we have made with our revitalization plan, and we could not have been successful designing this plan without the support of two, uh, amazing neighborhood planners, David Dunn and Bridgette Montgomery. We know that this is only the beginning for what our neighborhood will accomplish. Thank you for your support, or thank you for supporting the South Park Neighborhood Association.
And, and thank you to all three of you specifically. I know Joanne and Steve made so much happen, um, and so a lot of that's just a testament to how hard you guys worked in the neighborhood. So with that, I'll move nine, oh, councilman.
They worked hard to make a lot of things happen, and they worked extra hard to make sure a couple of things didn't happen.
They did.
Which was, which was just as important, so.
Absolutely. So I'll move 19A and B.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us to item 37. And item 37 is a approving a preliminary, uh, commitment of community development block grant, CDPG loan funds for the completion of the rehabilitation and site of improvements at 605 16th Street, Murillo Apartments at 1531 High. And, uh, council member Hensley, this, uh, I'm excited to see this move forward.
Um, I am too, and thank you, um, to the developer, Ryan. I see you here in the audience. I don't need to have you, um, come up, but just because there, this has been an item, um, that has received a lot of attention. It has been left unattended for, um, quite a long period of time. It has a lot of notoriety. For those of you in the audience, it's actually the Murillo building that was moved, um, from its original site up to the Sherman Hill address. And, um, I guess I would just like, when it, this is preliminary approval of the contract, to come back, and I would like to have the staff address these, and they'd work with you, um, Ryan, on this. But just making sure we have some type of expected timeline, because we really allowed it to go too long with the, um, previous developers that came forward, and I think that's created some of the problems. The decks, I know there's reference in the blue letter about the decks, and that's been a high level of concern with the neighboring businesses, um, around there, and just making sure that that's all resolved. And, um, if there could be some immediate contact with the neighbors, um, because I'm continuing to get questions and wanting to know what's going to happen with this, and, um, I'm not sure that you actually need a meeting with the Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association, but all of those businesses right there along are the ones that are, um, really asking the questions. And then there's reference to the financing, and I think it's real important that we get the financing in place and, um, have a better understanding of that when it comes back for final approval at the council. So that would, just like to have those items addressed in the blue letter when it comes back for final commitment at the council. And are we looking at a two-week period, a 30-day period? What, what's the timeline?
Mrs. Hensley, councilmembers, I, I'm not sure unless, unless Phil could comment from CD, or perhaps Ryan can enlighten.
Ryan, do you?
Yeah. Ryan Galloway, 1312 Locust, Suite 300A, Des Moines, Iowa. As far as the timeline for, to close on the financing or to close on the CDPG.
Just to address those comments there and...
Exactly.
Yeah.
He and Z approved one of three decks that was presented. We're going, we're going with the one that was approved.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be steel. The stairs are in the center of the building, and there's decks on either side. I'd be more than happy to meet with the business owners. We met with them last week for the High Street Brickstones, which is just a block away, and we'll meet with them again to make sure we're all on the same page.
Did you discuss this project with?
Not this project, but I, I've met them at least, and...
Okay.
Could certainly follow up with this, this project.
So is it...
I'd follow up with the folks to the south as well. There's a number of, uh...
Yeah.
...commercial users in those buildings there that have registered quite a bit of concern.
I just closed on the project on Friday, and I, I'm, I'm more than willing to meet with all the, the Sherman Hill Neighborhood Association, with Ryan Howell, or, and all the businesses as well in the...
Yeah, you know how it works, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Mrs. Hensley, could, could I suggest that you've raised a number of questions. Perhaps what we could do, uh, mayor and council, is to address those specific issues, uh, prior to it coming back as a contract. When it comes back as a contract...
You want to have it all put together.
It's kind of late in the game. So if we want to address those, I'd suggest we look at them now. We can work with the developer and our staff and...
And give us an update.
Give you an update in a couple of weeks or so on those issues.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Good luck, Ryan.
Good project. For those that have never seen it, this is actually a subject, I think, of a CNN piece. They call it the mighty Murillo, like the largest building that anybody had tried to move. It's a, it, it's a substantial building.
Seven yes?
All right, that completes our consent agenda. Let's move right to item 50, which is a communication report from Kelvin Robinson of 1856 Street to speak regarding city funding for low-income housing. Housing, is Kelvin in? All right.
I just want to thank the, if council allowed me to talk, um, I especially want to give kudos to the, um, housing director. Um, I believe he's really done an excellent job so far of what he has been doing. Um, he really deserves the kudos in that, um, like, I believe it's called the G8 program, and there's some other ones that are coming, another one that he's working on that will be a lot of help to low-income people. But I also, there is a downside to, this is year 2011, and there should not be one person living in a tent. There shouldn't be any tent cities or anything like that, but there are. Um, I also feel that, um, there are people that are forgotten too, that you need to try to remember. And we need more housing for, um, like temporary, any temporary housing or low-income, once we get to the low-income housing part, but we need some temporary housing for, um, mothers with children. There's very little places for that right now. Definitely fathers with children. They're, they've been forgotten almost. Um, and then also, uh, the, um, women, women in general need more shelters, okay? Um, this is a, uh, a time now where I believe that the city of Des Moines can take charge and take, take the lead like Florida has, but only better in taking care of the homeless, the low-income, the ones that don't even have anything. All right? I believe that you guys have the ability to do it. It's just that a little bit, it's like those saying, you put the pork chop on there, you put the coals on there, you put the kindling on there, anything else. Well, we put the fire on there, okay? But you got, like, again, you got to put that fire on there to get it going. Okay? And there's some things we need now, not tomorrow. I mean, not, um, not 10 years from tomorrow, or five years from now. We need now. And one thing is, is really important, is get those mothers who have children off the streets. That's what we need to do. But again, I don't want to take nothing away from the housing commissioner, because he has done an excellent job, and I want to make sure that, you know, you understand that. I mean, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments, and I think that, uh, for all of us that have worked so hard on homeless issues for the last five, six, seven, eight years, uh, we appreciate your comments, we understand your comments. Uh, and I will also say that it's a, uh, a very unfortunate situation that we face, because some of the funds that we get to do some of this work, uh, outside of, of working with the private sector, who've really been great partners, are CDPG dollars. And, you know, when we see a, uh, reduction in funding in that area is an entitlement city of 16.2% this year on what we thought was an approved budget, I think it's deplorable and should never have happened. I think that there's other things that, uh, they could have, uh, reduced to get their budget in line, but to take dollars away from those that can at least afford to, to help themselves is a very unfortunate position and makes us all work harder to try to figure out how we can better use our funds to do it. So we'll, we'll keep working with you, Kelvin, and appreciate your comments tonight.
There's one, one quick thing I forgot to ask today. Um, I would like to challenge the city council to, one day, two days, however you can handle, strip yourself of your worldly goods and go to one of these shelters and see what it's like. See that standing outside in the rain, waiting to get in, or, because there's not enough beds, you got to sleep on your chair, you know? I really challenge you guys. Hopefully one of you will try and see what it's like. I think the Iowa, um, uh, home shelter is probably one of the best but safest places to go to. So I challenge you, I hope you make a life out of it.
Some of us have spent nights under bridges, uh, with kids, trying to let our community know, uh, what the plight of, of homeless folks is. I know that a number of us have, uh, worked up at Central Iowa Shelter and Services, uh, serving meals either through faith-based groups or whatever, and you're absolutely right, it's an experience, uh, that everybody should spend some time with, in addition to, you know, taking everything off and go hang with them all night. I think, uh, one of our supervisors did that as well. Uh, I did it more under a bridge rather than, than climbing in bed with them, but it's, uh, an experience really that everybody should understand, uh, and that people need help. That often they, they're not in a position to help themselves, and we got to get the situation where we get programs and services to surround them, to move them to productive members of society rather than just Tuesday to Wednesday. So appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file.
All right, that was the item that we move forward. Uh, we've got a couple of minutes. Let's hear from Adam Berger of 1105 28th Street to speak regarding snow ordinance notification system.
Like the mayor said, my name is Adam Berger. I live at 1105 28th Street in Des Moines, um, on the Drake campus. Um, I'm here to speak with you guys tonight, um, over frustration, maybe it's a broken record, maybe, um, you members of the council here this year after year, but I feel, you know, being a resident here, that the snow warn, the snow warning system, it works, but the warning system's a joke. Um, you go back to the night of February 2nd into the morning of February 3rd, I got an email at 3:05 in the morning that the snow ordinance was in effect. How am I supposed to move my car at 3:00 in the morning? Now, there's other cities I attached when I, um, appealed to speak with you guys tonight, using examples, um, for example, Evanston, Illinois. They use their tornado warning system at 8:15 at night. If they're going to, in place the snow warning ordinance system, and they give their residents three hours to get their cars off the street. Now, I went, I got ticketed on the 3rd, I went and appealed it to traffic court this past week, two weeks ago, and the judge looked me in the eye and he said, "The law's the law, but the city stole $55 from you." And that to me is just, you know, it's a joke. Like, I come from, originally from Burlington, Vermont, on all the main streets, there's flashing lights that go on to notify s-... put the coals on there, you put the kindling on there, anything else, you put the fire on there, okay? But you got, like, again, you got to put that fire on there to get it going, okay? And there's some things we need now, not tomorrow, I mean, not 10 years from tomorrow, five years from now. We need now. And one thing is, is really important, is get those mothers who have children off the streets. That's what we need to do. But again, I don't want to take nothing away from the Housing Commissioner, because he has done an excellent job, and I want to make sure that, you know, you understand that. I mean, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, and I think that for all of us that have worked so hard on homeless issues for the last five, six, seven, eight years, we appreciate your comments. We understand your comments. And I will also say that it's a very unfortunate situation that we face, because some of the funds that we get to do some of this work outside of working with the private sector, who've really been great partners, are CDBG dollars. And, you know, when we see a reduction in funding in that area, is an entitlement city of 16.2 percent this year on what we thought was an approved budget. I think it's deplorable and should never have happened. I think that there's other things that they could have reduced to get their budget in line, but to take dollars away from those that can at least afford to help themselves is a very unfortunate position and makes us all work harder to try to figure out how we can better use our funds to do it. So we'll keep working with you, Kelvin, and appreciate your comments tonight.
There's one quick thing I forgot to ask today. I would like to challenge the city council to, one day, two days, however you can handle, strip yourself of your worldly goods and go to one of these shelters and see what it's like. See that standing outside in the rain, waiting to get in, or, because there's not enough beds, you gotta sleep on your chair, you know? I really challenge you guys. Hopefully, one of you will try and see what it's like. I think the Iowa home shelter is probably one of the best but safest places to go to. So I challenge you. I hope you make a life out of it.
Some of us have spent nights under bridges with kids trying to let our community know what the plight of homeless folks is. I know that a number of us have worked up at Central Iowa Shelter and Services, serving meals either through faith-based groups or whatever, and you're absolutely right. It's an experience that everybody should spend some time with, in addition to, you know, taking everything off and go hang with them all night. I think one of our supervisors did that as well. I did it more under a bridge rather than climbing in bed with them, but it's an experience, really, that everybody should understand, and that people need help, that often they can't, they're not in a position to help themselves, and we got to get the situation where we get programs and services to surround them, to move them to productive members of society rather than just Tuesday to Wednesday. So appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file.
All right. That was the item that we moved forward. We've got a couple of minutes. Let's hear from Adam Berger of 1105 28th Street to speak regarding snow ordinance notification system.
Like the mayor said, my name is Adam Berger. I live at 1105 28th Street in Des Moines, on the Drake campus. I'm here to speak with you guys tonight over frustration, maybe it's a broken record, maybe you members of the council hear this year after year, but I feel, you know, being a resident here, that the snow warning, the snow warning system, it works, but the warning system's a joke. Go back to the night of February 2nd into the morning of February 3rd, I got an email at 3:05 in the morning that the snow ordinance was in effect. How am I supposed to move my car at 3:00 in the morning? Now, there's other cities I attached when I appealed to speak with you guys tonight using examples. For example, Evanston, Illinois, they use their tornado warning system at 8:15 at night if they're gonna in place the snow warning ordinance system, and they give their residents three hours to get their cars off the street. Now, I went, I got ticketed on the 3rd. I went and appealed it to traffic court this past week, two weeks ago, and the judge looked me in the eye and he said, "The law's the law, but the city stole $55 from you." And that, to me, is just, you know, it's a joke. Like, I come from, originally from Burlington, Vermont. On all the main streets, there's flashing lights that go on to notify citizens that there's a snow ordinance. I mean, I shouldn't have to rely on looking at the weather to be told that I can't park on the street. I mean, my house, there's limited parking. Drake neighborhood, it's, parking's pretty hard to come by, and especially when, you know, four of us live in the house with me, and we only have room for really three cars in the back. When it snows, we got to move one of them, and it's tough. I mean, I'm not asking, you know, for you guys to follow the exact system, but the city has a Twitter page. The Twitter page hasn't been updated since February 14th, 2010. And then to sign up for the email notification system and be notified at 3:05 in the morning that the snow ordinance is on, I'm, that's a joke. You know, I'm not saying we follow Evanston's, the way they do it, step by step, but, I mean, I feel as a citizen that it really needs to be changed, it needs to be corrected, whether it's putting set hours in, like, Evanston, you have till 11 to get your car off the street, and then they start ticketing. You know, just a heads up to tell people to get off the street. I asked the city, I asked the police department, how many students they ticketed in the Drake neighborhood, and every time it snows, Drake students get ticketed because they are either, we're either too busy with our academic work to check the website or check the weather, we're too busy working, paying off our tuition, to know. And I feel that, you know, maybe it's just a problem on Drake campus that we have that we're not notified enough, but I feel citywide, a lot of the residents probably feel the same way.
Any questions? Anybody of Adam?
Go ahead.
I think he brings up some good ideas, and I would like to see those and maybe some best practices from similar climate cities that might help us. I think some of the things you mentioned are low-cost or no-cost, so.
I would agree, and I would also like to maybe have it come back before a workshop with some recommendations. This is a perfect time of the year, because it's at the end of the season, we can look at it, be proactive, and maybe make some adjustments or changes, but also, I'd be curious as to the number of tickets more in the Drake area as opposed to other areas, and maybe we need to look at that a little bit differently, because we have had those comments come before this council before.
Mrs. Hensley, Mr. Coleman, councilmembers, I, we'd be happy to do the research and look at best practices, but I do want to make sure, with all deference to Mr. Berger, that we give you the facts about this particular case. I want you to see what those are. I don't have them right here in front of me, but I want to get that information to you. But we'll also research the best practices. We want to do this well. It is always a shock to have your car towed or ticketed in these situations, and we understand the turmoil that causes people, so we want to try to minimize it, and we'll look and see what we can do to make it better for folks. No matter what you do, you're always going to have some problems where this happens. Our goal is to try to minimize that.
And I understand that. I think that probably I'm a little bit more sensitive to it right now, because I believe all the council members received a letter from a professor at Drake with a very similar story.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for the city to go out and spend, you know, millions of dollars, because I'm sure that's what it cost Burlington when I was growing up. I mean, the system's been in place there for at least 20 years, but I mean, the sounds, the tornado sound system, or just inaccurate, you know, you have, the email goes out at 8:15 regardless of whether it's going to dump, you know, an inch and a half, whether, and they might need to put it on or not. I mean, it's really better safe than sorry, is something that, you know, I'm kind of really trying to bring to your attention.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much for bringing it.
Do we need to vote on that?
So let's, I think we just had to vote to receive and file.
I'll make that a motion to receive and file it, and come back with a report of what staff thinks are some good ideas.
All right.
Seven yes?
All right. We'll come back to the other two. It is now 5:04, and let's open our hearings. First item is item 51 on the conveyance of excess city-owned property located in the north side of Pleasant Drive, west of 56th Street, to R.M. Madden Construction, Inc., for residential development for $28,633, council communication number 11-245. Item A under that is an alternate proposal in a communication from Victoria Bettis of 4231 Southeast 23rd Street, submitting a competing proposal for that same property for $40,000. Let's go ahead and open the hearing. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Is Mr. Madden or a representative here?
I think there's somebody in the back there.
Seeing none?
We're Victoria and Cory Bettis. We put the competing bid in for $40,000 on that property. We live on 4231 Southeast 23rd Street, and we're family of five. We're, we live in the Eastern Lake area, and we're looking to move towards that area because our son, our second son will go to school at St. Augustine's there next fall. So my father-in-law, he lives in Ford Dodge. He builds, been building homes for 25 years, and he's more than willing to work with us there to build a nice property, and I've got, I've got the floor plans, kind of fits into the, I don't...
Mr. Coleman, you want to put it so everybody can see that on the?
Good idea.
Kind of ten and four plans of what we had in mind of the property there.
So it's your intent to actually live in the property then?
Yeah.
You'll live there, yep.
We've been looking in the Waterbury area. One of our sons is already over there, and the activities for Eastern Lake to South, or St. Augustine, it's a lot of traveling, so we want to kind of build that way. We've got three kids that'll be going there and then Dowling and...
So did you just start looking in the Waterbury, or how, because you're coming in pretty late to the process?
We've been looking over in the 19th Street area, 18th Street area. I had a good friend, West Des Moines area, out in that, or just looking at properties. I had real estate agents looking back and forth, checking. And we, to find a lot that's vacant, that's open, has been tough. I looked to the property right next adjacent to it, and an architect, an architect owns it, and he owns all the land coming around there. And I asked him two weeks ago what the price might be on that lot, and he's kind of want, he was kind of looking to sell the more of an acre back through there, and I was, I had asked for a price, and he didn't know, so then he asked, then he said, "You might want to check with the city." I think they were trying to sell the property right next to it, and the light bulb went on, and so I was like, checked, checked into that, and I like checked into it.
I had been trying to get ahold of the city since, was it January? We talked to some neighbors, and they thought it was for sale, and I talked to Park and Rec, and then they gave me a name of someone else, and I had been leaving messages, and it just happened that that guy had sent to call the real estate division, and that's how it just all kind of fit together. But we'd been looking at that adjacent property, trying to get ahold of that gentleman since, like, January, February. Our friends live on that street and kind of directed us over there.
Okay. Well, based upon, originally, when I first saw this, I thought it was an issue of fairness, because the bids had already come in. I've discussed it with legal and with the staff, and I advise that bids can actually be made on the property up till the time we, as a council, take action. And obviously, it's better for the city, and I think you've got a nice plan here. I'm comfortable going ahead and moving this. We have items in the blue letter that specify what some of the minimum criteria would be, and you're willing to meet, meet the criteria? You've read the criteria? So you understand what the expectations would be?
Right.
To stay within the context of the neighborhood and...
That it would be compatible with the rest of the neighborhood and...
Yeah, there's a dollar value, I think, $220.
There is a dollar value as well.
We want to go like $250, $300.
$250 to $300 in that range.
Okay. Excellent. So when would you want to start? You're getting your financing in place and...
Yeah, we're, we're, we didn't know, it's just a matter of when's selling our other home. So either immediately or, you know?
As soon as possible.
But your intention is to close on the lot?
Yes.
Immediately?
Yeah, we've already placed the $40,000 check with real estate division.
You have? Okay. Great.
Nice work.
All right. Mrs. Hensley, do you have a motion?
I'm going to move item 51 with the accepting of the offer, item A, which would be Victoria and Cory Bettis. Did you need that?
Do you want it?
It's like a tentative, kind of the structure we're looking at.
Sure.
It's not the final, because we need to do measurements.
I have lots of questions from the neighborhoods, so if you don't mind, can I share this with the neighbors? Okay. Great. Very good. Thank you very much.
And do you want to make that part of the record, by the way?
Oh, yes. I'll make this part.
Somebody else wants to speak.
Yeah, and so let's receive and file that.
I'll receive and file this.
On favor, say aye.
Wait, wait.
Oh, that's a receiving and file of that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, I didn't realize we had other speakers come up.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, I'm pleased that you have chosen this, these individuals to build in our neighborhood, but there is one issue that I think is not mentioned in the blue letter. On the property, I believe there is two large oak trees, and I wanted to make certain that the owners know that in Waterbury, we consider our trees as valuable as our water and sewers and streets, and that's very important to everyone in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to ask that there be a condition, that these trees be protected and saved from being removed. I think it's possible, they're on the edges of the property, but it certainly goes with the character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
I guess I would add that we look at the tree mitigation and how that would impact that property, based upon what we know.
And is your intent to try to, where the, to save those trees?
I know about the one in front of the oak tree. I don't think that looks, I don't think that looks pretty sound, so I would find that was a keep-alot. I'm a big, I'm a real estate person.
Great. Okay.
Hi, I'm Bill Nassif. I live at 5708 Pleasant Drive, directly across the street, pretty much, from the lot. Be happy to have the folks as neighbors. I'm past president of the Waterbury Neighborhood Association, still on the board, and I just wanted to point out that when this whole process started a little over a year ago, they didn't really have the boundaries marked out for this proposed lot, and when they did finally mark them out, and I kind of walked it off myself, had a rough idea, but when they actually marked it out, it turns out that the, that the boundaries for the lot actually encroach on maybe 10, 15, 20 feet over onto a retaining wall and a fence that I can't imagine, you know, the city would want to, it'd be the city's obligation to maintain that. Waterbury Neighborhood Association has an interest in, you know, kind of keeping the, maintaining the shrubbery, the overgrowth, you know, that has always been a problem around that retaining wall. And so I think the Bettises would be, you know, probably not too interested in, and the city not too interested in selling it, Bettis is not interested in buying, you know, the area that actually encroaches on that, on that retaining wall fence area. I just wanted to point that out, that maybe that's something, since we've got a, revisiting this whole thing anyway, could maybe be resolved in connection with the sale.
Can I just, I'll just add to the motion that we look at that and work directly with you to make sure that that's taken into account? And so I know that there's already an easement going through the property, which you're aware of, obviously. So if we could look at that and see if there are any options that are mutually beneficial for both parties that we could look at?
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
So do we have all of that?
Yep, and I think we have a motion.
We have a motion to approve.
Yep, and we all received and filed, and so...
And I've got the received file.
And then if we could...
Mr. Mayor, before you add...
If we can make...
Mayor and council, maybe a question for, for legal counsel on this one. I just want to make sure, your action tonight with these additional items, is it your intent that it come back here to the table?
No.
No.
For your review, or are you just simply saying these are issues you want us to look into?
Just have, work with the property owner, we're willing to sell the property based upon those items being resolved.
Okay. So, but if there is a change in the boundary, I think it would have to come back to you as you're approving a certain configuration here.
I would agree with the manager. If the boundary changes, it would have to come back to council.
Can it be an easement?
That may be, that may be possible, yeah.
Okay. So even that would need to come back?
So is your intent that you, if we can work it out with, within the confines of the current boundary, that's okay, but you understand that if it changes, then we'd have to bring it back here.
I guess what we'd like to do is to make sure to allow them to continue moving forward. I think you're getting the direction that we're very supportive and want, there may be a few technicalities here that might...
If we have to add a few details, we'll do what it takes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when it comes back to us, it's not in the same condition it was this time, where somebody else legally could make another bid on it because the property changed.
Yeah, we've...
Except, I just want to, I just, if, if we decide that it's a different legal description, somebody might argue that, so I'm just wanting on the record.
The sale is final.
Jeb, can you shed something really important on this issue?
Jeff, real estate engineer, an issue retaining wall, I don't know if you can get up on the camera here. If you look at the plat, I think the gentleman is referring to, this is the property pane for the actual piece of property, which has this little piece of retaining wall. On this particular plat, it's already been moved over. It had been staked more than once. Originally, it was staked over there with the retaining wall, and we went ahead and moved that over before the sale with Mr. Madden, because he want, he didn't want the retaining wall either, so that's been moved over, so it's not on the property.
Okay.
But there are, there's other conditions that go with this that are included in the description, the stormwater easement, which was an issue as far as how they can site their house on there.
Okay, but with respect to the retaining wall, Jeb, that's, that has been taken out of the deed, so...
Tree issue's another thing, but the retaining wall...
But it sounds like they're accepting of the tree issue.
So it sounds like we've...
So it sounds like you could take final action. If you would, if the understanding could be that if we run into a problem in terms of some detail that requires your further action, we'll bring it back to you with the caveat from Mr. Coleman, that this is essentially a done deal. It would be a matter of correcting the deed. Is that your...
I think we've got that settled.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Seven yes?
All right. Item 52, on approval of an agreement with Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity for the conveyance of a tax-sold deed, properties at 1144 17th Street and 317 Mahaska Avenue to develop housing, council communication number 11-234. Is there anyone in the audience to discuss this? Item 53 is items regarding the AH Blank Park Zoo, council communication number 11-229. A is an amended conceptual super block master plan. B is a conceptual master plan by the Blank Park Zoo Foundation, Inc. C is a hearing on the vacation of AH Blank Park at 711 Southwest 9th Street and AH Blank Park Zoo at 7401 Southwest 9th, is Parkland. One is the first consideration of the vacation ordinance. D is the hearing on the long-term lease, operation, management, and maintenance agreement. E is a hearing on the reallocation of unspent proceeds of general obligation bonds, taxable series 2009G, general obligation bonds 2010D, and general obligation bonds taxable series 2010E, council communication number 11-256. A is the authorization for additional action. And F is the urban renewal economic development agreement with the Blank Park Zoo Foundation for a $8,100,000 grant, council communication number 11-254. Is there anyone here to, Mr. Coleman?
I would just start with some acknowledgements, and I know that one of the co-chairs of the campaign to bring the new zoo to life is here to make some comments, but I've watched this closely, and I just want to thank the council, because I think we've been really clear about the need to try and do something to help improve the zoo while at the same time lessening the long-term burden on the taxpayers. And the Zoo Foundation, many of them are here today, has been a great partner in that. We've talked about it the last couple of meetings and at a workshop, but I just want to say that I think this is a really positive direction for the city, for the people we represent, but probably most of all for the kids and families that enjoy the zoo, because I think we're finally in a position where the private sector is going to have a lot of confidence that, that their investment charitable giving to the zoo will really pay off with a dynamic and dramatically enhanced zoo. So I'm really proud, and I'd like to move it when the time comes for it to be, to be moved. But our colleague, former colleague from West Des Moines is here, Loretta Seaman.
Loretta Seaman, 4710 Mills Civic Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa, co-chair of the Capitol Campaign. I think it's important that the mayor, the city manager, the council, the members of the board of directors from the zoo, and the team be told to the general public. I have watched this process for many, many months. I have watched a lot of hours be put into it, and I am extremely pleased. The teamwork that went into this was phenomenal, and it's all about the state of Iowa, it's about the children of Iowa, it's about the families of Iowa, and the guests that will visit the zoo. The super block started this program with the mayor, Frank County, with Brian Meyer, Chris Coleman, and Mike Hubbell, the co-chair of the campaign, and many others, getting together and deciding, what is it that we need to do to the south side of Des Moines? How do we bring it back to a very bright, vibrant part of the community and of the state? Then we put our teams together. Mark Bukovich, our president and CEO, led the team with Tom Slaughter, Mike Hubbell as the co-chair, and past president of the board, Dean Whitaker, Emily Williams Buschka, who is our coordinator for the campaign, and they put together our team from the zoo. On behalf of the board of directors who are here tonight, we are extremely proud of this team and the hours and the work that went into it. The city then put their team together, and Rick Clark, Chris Coleman, Don Tripp, Ben Page, and Ann DiDonato represented the city. And it's important that the people realize how many, 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 many hours went into this. This was not an easy task. It's a very large project that we want to do. It is a statewide project with Des Moines in the lead because it's housed here on the south side. So I publicly, on behalf of the board, want to say thank you. I want the residents of this state to realize how much nicer our zoo will be. We have an exceptional plan, which anyone is welcome in the audience to come out and see. We're extremely proud of it. We're proud, and I am personally proud, having been born and raised on the south side of Des Moines, that this is happening and that you were able to do this. Thank you very, very much, and thank you for your vote of encouragement, which I'm sure will happen. And thank you, Chris, for making that motion.
Loretta, thank you very much, and I just want you to know that if you want to come back to the south side of Des Moines, we've got a spot for you.
She's not going to run for Ward Four issue. Because I'd probably get beat, so. I, I would like to thank Loretta and, and Mike, Mark, and, and the members of the board that are here. Billy, yes, he's out there. And I think that this is, this plan is, is something that we can do now. It's, 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 you know, when Frank and I worked for, I guess it's been three or four years ago, we worked on that initial plan, that was sort of, I think we all sort of had doubts about it. It was sort of pie in the sky. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a hundred million dollars or whatever to, what would we do with it? But this is a realistic plan. It's, it's come a long ways and, and it's something that, my understanding is we're starting already. I haven't been out there lately, but I'm going to maybe give you a call, Mark, and take another tour out there in the next couple of weeks. So I really appreciate everybody's work on this, Chris, and on our council, and I look forward to seeing how this unravels in the next couple of years. It's a great plan. Thank you, everybody.
Any other questions or any comments by anybody?
I would just, no questions, but just like to echo all of the comments, and we've had some workshops on this. It's, it's just a great project, and I'm really pleased to see everybody coming together on it. And I see also Bob and Gloria Burnett that have been longtime supporters of the zoo and really appreciate all of their support. And let's get the zoo piece done because I want a trail that comes from Gray's Lake out to the zoo. That's the next little piece.
We'll do all that mall.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have plans.
You got a plan.
Very good.
And don't forget our former mayor that's sitting proudly in the audience.
Yes.
Bob Ray. He warmed up to that position as governor, and he got good training over there.
Worked his way up. Hey. All, before I move it, you know, the, the people that are the real brains of the operation, a lot of them are here, the staff, and I, I want to thank them because I know most of the ideas on how we can make that zoo better come from the people that are working with the animals and out in the zoo every day. So thanks to each of you that worked there. Mark kind of got the credit on behalf of the staff, and I know if he was up here, he would say, he only knows what those guys tell him. And I, I appreciate the work you do, and, and we appreciate your leadership out there. So with that, I'll move it. It is item fifty-three, A through F.
Seven yes.
All right. Item fifty-four, and thank you all for coming down in support of the zoo, and we look forward to our continued work together. Item fifty-four is on the Twenty-third Amendment to the restated urban revitalization plan for citywide urban revitalization area to expand the northeast Hubble Business Park subarea. A is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Bob, any thoughts?
Certainly. I, this is a, a great opportunity for our city to expand out in the northeast area and bring into the business park here. We've had plans for this area before that have fallen through, but I think we've got some good plans now. B.J. Baker's going to step forward and do a big housing project, and we need to work with him on this, and I would certainly move this if there's no other speakers.
That's okay.
Mr. Coleman.
Seven yes.
All right. Item fifty-five is on items regarding issuance of general obligation bonds. Council Communication number eleven dash two fifty-seven. A is a twenty-one million, one hundred and eighty thousand essential corporate purposes miscellaneous issuance. One, authorization for additional action. B, a twelve million, four hundred and ninety thousand essential corporate purpose urban renewal issuance. One is authorization for additional action. C is a nine hundred and thirty thousand general per, general corporate purpose library. One is authorization for additional action. D is a nine hundred and sixty-five thousand general corporate purposes municipal buildings. Authorization for additional action under, one under that. E is a seven hundred and thirty-five thousand general corporate purposes fire, library, municipal buildings. One under that is an authorization for additional action. F is eight sixty-five general corporate purposes miscellaneous improvements. One under that is a authorization for additional action. G, three hundred and thirty thousand general corporate purposes for parks. One is an authorization for additional action. H is a three hundred and twenty-five thousand general corporate purposes for parks. One under that is authorization for additional action. And I is a ten million dollar general corporate purposes refunding series two thousand five A. One is authorization for additional action. Is there anybody in the audience or council to speak on any of these items? Yes.
Mayor and council, there's one new point about this that I, I want to make mention of, and it ties back to a little story having to do with the CDBG program. The mayor has been, I think, as all of you know, actively involved in working with our friends in Congress in Washington on the block grant program. Nonetheless, the action of the U.S. Congress and the president last week or two resulted in about a sixteen percent reduction in block grant dollars, and so we've been scrambling as to how to cope with those loss of dollars. Keep in mind, that's a loss of dollars that occurs in the current program year for block grants, so we're a little bit behind the eight ball since we're well into the year. One of the things that we can do is to look at the program that's funded with block grant, and by the way, it's about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss of funds, I think, for the current year, so fairly significant. One of the things that we can do is to look at some of those activities and see if there are alternative ways to fund it. There is a program I think you're familiar with called NERP, which is the Neighborhood Infrastructure Repair Program. I think I'm saying that right. It funds things like sidewalks and curb repairs in designated neighborhoods. What I want, want to suggest to you is that we don't increase the GO bond amount, but rather see if we can shift some funds around within this particular action this evening that would allocate about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars essentially towards the NERP program. That would then relieve the block grant program of that, that sum of money. It doesn't completely fix our problem with the loss of dollars, but it, it is a step in that direction, and it also allows us to continue a program activity that is very popular and effective in fixing up our older neighborhoods. So if you approve the item that's on the agenda tonight as recommended, it does include the allocation of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars to the NERP program to be funded with GO bond proceeds, and I recommend it to you for that reason.
But it, that does not increase the.
It does not increase the bottom line. It is, yes, it's a reallocation.
For the purposes for general public that's watching this, would you quickly explain to them what NERP does in neighborhoods?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council, it essentially, it's a program that allows for the city to go into older neighborhoods and repair things like sidewalks and curbs that are out of repair. I'm looking at Pat Kuzitz. Is that essentially it, Pat?
I'd be able to speak to that.
Please.
We'd love to have you, and we'll keep you to two minutes or less, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I'm Pat Kuzitz, a deputy public works director. The Neighborhood Infrastructure Rehabilitation Program was designed back in the late nineties, and it was designed to help these neighborhoods recover from a debilitating condition. We go in there, we repair curbs, we replace sidewalk, we overlay streets, we trim the trees, we give it a good shot in the arm to help stabilize it. Earlier tonight, you heard from Merle Hay Neighborhood Association and South Park, both neighborhoods, in this program, and enjoyed great results out of it.
Thanks, Pat.
I might also speak that it was a great program for Accent Neighborhood over there
because they had some vast improvements that were, really were in dire need of help, and this NERP program did a great job. Thanks, Pat, for your efforts.
All right. So we have a motion?
Move. A through five. Seven yes.
All right. Fifty-six, on the two thousand eleven CDBG recovery program. This is a different program, by the way, not to be confused with CDBG. Sidewalk replacement resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsive bidder as TK Concrete, Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, president, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Council Communication number eleven dash two forty-eight. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Anybody in the audience to speak on this one? Seeing none. Could we have a motion?
Move.
Item fifty-seven, on the fourth and grand parking garage elevator modification resolution to approving the plan, specification, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsive bidder as O'Keefe Elevator Company, Inc., Brett A. Ables, senior vice president, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars. Council Communication number eleven dash two forty. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Any one to speak on this item?
I'll move fifty-seven. Fifty-seven, may I? Seven yes.
Item fifty-eight, on the city hall, great hall window replacement resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as Strong Tower Construction, LLC, doing business as Coke Corporation. Benjamin Feen, CEO, five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Council Communication number eleven dash two forty-seven. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet.
I'll move.
Question on this. Based upon the financial, the funding source, it says that money was unbudgeted but included in the planned general obligation bond sale, so we're not, again, increasing the total dollar amount. It's just that we're rearranging the funds.
Correct. That is correct.
All right. Fifty-nine is Grand View, well, wait a minute, I guess we better finish the voting.
Seven yes.
Okay, fifty-nine is Grand View Golf Course Clubhouse Resolution, approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, and to receive and file bids. The Council Communication number eleven dash two fifty-eight. And, Mr. Manager, I think I'd like to have you quickly update us on the goings-on of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item on the agenda tonight does not have you approving the final contract or the award of contract, but, but I do want to point out that the bids that came in were very close to budget, but there was also included in the bidding an ad alternate, which would finish off the basement area into a garage where you could store the golf carts. It is, it is an improvement in the project that we think is a very desirable, good thing to do. Otherwise, you end up with a facility that's not really completed and has all the golf courts outside. It just, it just isn't the project I think that we had all intended. But it is something that could be added in. The cost of that, based on the bids that we have, would be up to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I'm looking at Jeb just to make sure that, that number is accurate. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but I'd appreciate some direction from you all. It would be my suggestion that if you're interested in that ad alternate, that you allow me to come back at your next bidding when you award the contract to include the ad alternate, and I'll do my best to identify a source of funding that would be available for that purpose.
What's the size of the building?
I think it's six thousand square feet.
Six thousand feet, and what's the addition to the contract to do that?
Three hundred and twenty thousand, Mr. Mayor.
Three twenty?
Three hundred and twenty.
Basement under it?
Basement and finish it off.
So would we anticipate that there would be some private fundraising to go along with city? Is that the?
Mrs. Hensley, I just, that's not my expectation that there would be additional private fundraising. We're certainly willing to look at it, but given the timeframe and award a contract, I think it's unlikely that we could do that. We'd have to identify other dollars within our budgets, and frankly, what I would be looking at would be economic development dollars for that purpose.
And you might remember that we've already fundraised privately from Lois Smith, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is almost half of what the cost is going to be, coming from the private.
Mayor, I think that this clubhouse is going to be a great addition for that golf course. Ever since I was a kid, you weren't able to use the clubhouse. It's been in such poor shape. It'd also be a great addition to the east side, and I know that we've tossed the idea of a basement back and forth, back and forth, but if, if we don't have a basement in there every time I drive by, I know I'll be thinking it's an incomplete project, and all the carts will be sitting outside, and, and I'll tell you, I would really appreciate it myself, and I know that the folks that use that golf course as well as probably the contractor would really appreciate if we could get that basement underneath to keep the carts in storage. And I know when I'm out at Waveland, I wish there was a way we could get those inside there in sightly, and I'm sure out at Blank, they also are, but we have an opportunity on this one that if, if we can do it, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
And I, I would agree with Skip. I think we've got some real improvements that could be made by doing this, by hiding the golf carts themselves, eliminate any vandalism that could, if you have them under, under the, in the garage, which there's possibly vandalism going. And the third is, you know, Ned had said that if he has the facilities, that he would convert the golf carts over a period of time to electric, so we'd get rid of the emissions, a, a step in the green direction, so to speak.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I think you have a speaker.
I have a speaker.
We have a speaker, sir. I'm sorry. Almost missed you over there. You were camouflaged.
Marty Mock, twenty-seven oh one. Arthur, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Northeast Neighbors. We have worked along with the city, and I do want to say right up front, the relationship that the city staff has had with the neighborhood associations in this process has been fantastic. It has been a very positive relationship. They've come, they've asked the questions, they've honestly listened, they have taken the time to look at alternatives that neighborhood leaders would come up with. I think it's been an amazing process, and I want to congratulate the city manager and his staff in the process that they've taken through this. We had one meeting that was a very important meeting when we discussed the, the actual location of the clubhouse, and we found at that meeting, it was well-attended not only by neighborhood leaders but also by residents in the area, that there was a real split as to whether the, the clubhouse should be closer to the street or a little bit down the hill. And actually, when we took a vote, it was a very close vote, fifty-fifty, actually it was about sixty, sixty, forty, that, well, if the city needed it to be close to where it is, even though the people kind of wanted it farther away from the street, that would be, that would be good, and we'll go ahead and, and go with what the city thought would be the best object. One of the reasons they did that was because that the city would say, that they would say, hey, listen, you know, we'll try to find areas of mitigating that larger building so close to East Twenty-Ninth, because when you come over the hill or you go up the hill, you look over there where the placement of the building is, it's potential to be very, very close to the street. And the other thing was, is that if they said, we put it close to the street, then we will have the ability to mitigate the problem with the golf carts and being out in the thing because we, and the existing location where it is right now and, and working with it, we can put that, that, the possibility of putting that basement in there and get those carts in there. And so I. And so I appreciate the willingness for the city council to look at doing this add-on, and a lot of the money has been raised privately, and so it's kind of hard to keep saying, you know, keep going to a private, well, when really this is a city project and we can, and we can do that. So I appreciate the willingness of the city manager's part to try to identify those funds. And thank you also so much for, to the staff, for their ability to work with the neighborhoods in such a way. Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Anybody else? All right.
If not, I will move item 59.
Seven, yes?
Item 60 is on the Pioneer Columbus Community Center HVAC Improvements Resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Climate Solutions, Inc., Chris Bowles, President, $187,236.80. Council Communication Number 11-230, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Mr. Manager, I would like to ask you one question on this and probably on some of these other projects. Are we holding these projects up to a, a fairly environmental, environmentally efficient in conservation filter to make sure that, that our buildings are really top performance, low energy consumption? And I know that we've done it in the Parks area on the ML King Senior Center over there and a number of others, so I hope that we're using that same standard to do our other buildings as well.
Mr. Mayor, council, it's a great, it's a great point and a great question. In this case, my understanding is that these are high-efficiency improvements, and perhaps Jeb would be able to give some more detail, or Don, either one?
Mayor, Members of Council, Jeb Rohr, City Engineer. When we look at major upgrades to any of the HVAC mechanical systems, we kind of have to look at the systems and say, is this appropriate time to make major improvements? What can we do to get better energy efficiency? In this particular project, these are high-efficiency units, so there'll be significant energy savings over the period of time. We did investigate whether going to a geothermal system, but looking at the cost of retrofitting, sometimes coming back in existing buildings, the costs are higher, and so the lifecycle cost on the building for the system, it just didn't pay out for the long term, but this will have significant energy savings for these particular systems that be installed.
What, what level of efficiency are we talking about with this particular deal, and what is it replacing?
I could get you the numbers, I don't, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head as far as the increase in efficiency on there, but we did do an energy study on these before we selected them.
Okay, love to see it. Glad that you're staying on top of it.
We're trying, Mr. Mayor, and we'll get you the detail on it.
I'll move 60 and 68. Seven, yes?
Item 61 is on the Police Station Window Replacement Resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate designating the lowest responsible bidder as Strong Tower Construction, LLC, doing business as Coke Corporation. Benjamin Feen, CEO, $763,200. Council Communication Number 11-243, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Again, another energy efficiency move.
I'll move 61 and 61A. Seven, yes?
All right, let's note that the hearings are ending at 5:44. All right, it takes us back.
Can we take 49 first, Mr. Mayor? Mr. DeMarco, we'll be back in a minute.
All right, 49 is from the Historic East Village Neighborhood Association regarding a Green Alley Concept. Who is going to make that presentation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
This started with a request of a, there was an issue with a alley where people were parking it continually, and the businesses around there wanted something done about it. Well, then, it, it kind of morphed into more of a conversation that about the dumpsters in the alley and the shape of the alley and everything, and so the suggestion was made that to take the two alleys between 4th and, East 4th and East 6th from Grand to Locust and take a look at making them green alleys. This picture that's up now is a picture of a green alley in Chicago, it's a residential green alley. What I would like to do is receive and file this request, give it to staff to come back for a report on this. Chicago, I'd like to make a note, I first learned about this from the city of Dubuque, they're doing this in all their alleys, and they indicated that they sent staff to Chicago, and Chicago will give them all the training they need in order to do this free of charge. So that's one thing to take a look at. Minneapolis has now adopted it, Seattle, LA, and numerous other cities around the country, and I think this is something worthy to take a look at and see if we couldn't do these two alleys as a pilot project. I move to receive and file.
Yep, and I would also note that as we're voting, that, as we know, that alleys do occasionally present some problems, and I think it's a good idea to stay on top of them, and as we have to resurface or renew them to look at this kind of a concept, I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Moore, the locations again?
It's between East 4th and East 6th, from East 4th to East 6th, then between Grand and Locust.
Okay.
And if, is Judy here? If we, Mr. Manager, if we could have the police department monitor the parking in, in that alley, I'd appreciate it, because I don't think that no parking sign did a bit of good.
Six, yes?
Okay, item 48 is from Frank DeMarco of 14107 South Shore Drive, Clive, to speak regarding a sidewalk at 1424 Beaver Avenue.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for having given me the opportunity to talk to you about this property. My wife and I own a property with my mother on 1426 and 1424 Beaver, it's a duplex. It's been in our family for three generations. My father and his brother owned it, and then my grandfather prior to them. What I wanted to talk to you today about was, we had a request from the Public Works Department to redo our sidewalk in front because the slope was inadequate for, I believe the ADA was more than a quarter inch per foot. And what I wanted to do was illustrate, I wanted to show you the sidewalk, it's, it's kind of a sidewalk going to nowhere. And I also want to emphasize that it's not our intention at all to avoid our responsibilities with the property whatsoever, but I've got some, I've got some, some pictures here, you should be able to... Yeah, I've got it up here. I'm going to show you, I've got a couple of pictures here, and, let me see if I can rotate this, and if I can't, I'll show you the plat map. Rotate, there it is. Oops, rotated the wrong way. The, the property, the sidewalk that goes on the property, okay, there we go. This, this is University Avenue here, and the top of the map is north, and Clark Street runs into Beaver Avenue running here, and this was done by my graphics department.
Quite a compliment.
They had had, they had had a long day. If you prefer the plat map, I've got the plat map here.
This is good, I think we know exactly what you're talking about.
Do you? Okay, Dolls is up the street here, and the property is a, is a two, is a duplex here, it's a ranch-style white brick property right here. And there, this sidewalk here is, there's pieces of it that they've marked for us to replace, which of course we'd be happy to do it, but we don't want to put money into a bridge to nowhere, because if, and I'm going to show you pictures of this, past the next house down, there are no sidewalks. There's another property or two here, and then there's an empty lot right here that has no sidewalk, and I'll show you how long this, this goes, and by the way, the city owns this property, okay?
We've tried to sell it.
Yeah, maybe I'll buy it from you.
Yeah.
This, there's a, there's an island here, and I didn't draw, oh, it's right here. I didn't draw it very well, but for this sidewalk that goes on the north side of University, there is a full curb with no relief for access going across this island, and there's no relief here to get to the sidewalk here, so there is no accessibility on this side of the street at all. Now, conversely, there is a sidewalk on this side, and it has access and relief all the way up on the other side. So there is, there is access, but really, this goes nowhere, and I'll see if I could illustrate that for you.
Frank, just for matter of clarification.
Sure.
Where you've got university, isn't that actually Forest?
Is it Forest?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize, yeah. I was only born here 53 years ago, you'd think I'd know that. This is looking to the, this is looking to the southwest, this is the property right here, and this is looking to the southwest to Forest, thank you, and there's that little island, and there is no access to be able to get across onto the sidewalk anyway. These are pieces of the sidewalk that they want, they want removed and straightened out. And then I'm going to show you some other views here, if this will work. Okay, this is on the south side, as you can see, looking to the southeast. That's, this is, this is the sidewalk they want replaced. If you walked on it and saw it, you would not visually be able to even see any issues at all, except I will say, this entryway onto the ramp of our driveway is a little rough, I would say, and we especially don't want to repair that right now, because it's our intent to resurface the back area. It's got gravel and, and asphalt in the back, we, it's got gravel in the back, we'd like to surface it with either gravel or concrete. I'll get back to that in a minute.
Permeable pavement is what we're kind of looking for, so it's sort of a heads-up.
Okay. This is looking down, this is looking to the northwest, and as you can see, here's the lot, there's one, one house next to us that has a sidewalk, then it's got no sidewalk, and there's the city's property right there, no sidewalk. Okay? This is looking again to the, this is Forest, and this is that, you can see there's no relief there, there's no relief here for accessibility, and that's not on our property, that's our neighbor's property. This is looking to the east on Forest, again, you can see that there's no relief for accessibility here or here. There is on the other side, though, this sidewalk does continue. This is looking, what direction here? I believe this is looking to the...
Northwest.
Yep. And, let me back up there. Okay. Okay, this is, this is further up the street, looking to the northwest, and again, you can see that there's, it goes a long way up before there's anything at all. This is looking from, this view here is looking from the other side of the street.
Isn't that Clark?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's looking across the street over to Clark, and I was showing that there is, there is a relief on the sidewalk there and there. And this is Clark right here, looking to the, looking to the northwest, and you can see that there is accessibility there. And this is further up that street, the next street up, Whitmer Park, you see, there's no sidewalk all the way up here. You're getting my point, though.
Okay, could we kind of wrap it up, we're running way over time?
Yeah, that's all.
And maybe we could, tell us what you would like to have?
What we'd like, what we're asking for is a more reasonable timeline based upon this information to give us, if, if there's ever any sidewalk that is connected or any relief given up the street to the, to the southwest of us, we'd be more than happy to comply. But right now, there's, there's no chairs to, to our, two neighbors to the, to the west of us there, so there's no use of that sidewalk whatsoever with, with people who need accessibility. There is accessibility across the street, and that sidewalk doesn't really go anywhere. So we, we don't mind putting the resources in if it's needed, but we're, we're not seeing why, why to put money into a sidewalk that goes nowhere.
Question, was there a notice? Did, if staff could address the question, was there a complaint that was filed, and that's why you're being asked to do that? Is it related to ADA?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the council, I'm Pat Kuzitsa, Deputy Public Works Director. There was an inspection of this property, it happened last fall. At that time, it was found to be non-compliant with our code provisions because of the slope on the sidewalk, and we inspected on a complaint basis.
So there was a complaint?
Yes.
Okay. So were the other, were the other sidewalks right in that area inspected as well, and is this the only one that's being asked to be?
No, there were defects on the other sections of sidewalk, and they are listed as well. This section of sidewalk had 44 feet of excessive slope on the sidewalk. The sidewalk adjacent to it on both sides had some defects as well. And I have a picture here, a pictorial here, that might help us, we can look at this.
So the, what, what we're requesting from the city is we not only replace the sidewalk, but we eliminate the slope or make it compliant with the requirements?
Yes, we have code requirements for sidewalk, this is non-compliant, we're asking that it be compliant, and that is that it has a proper slope to it. The section would have to be replaced and report to do that. I believe the request here is to have the sidewalk removed, so it would not have to meet sidewalk requirements. Here's a picture of the property, if I've got this right for you here, it's here, and as he points out, here is the sidewalk that is just beyond his property, but this is the location we're talking about, correct?
I believe so, yeah. Well, the, the idea of removing it was, was an idea that came up. I grew up right by Veterans Hospital to the east of the main gate of that little one-way street called Euclid where my mother still lives, and she's a joint owner of this property. And there were no sidewalks there on either side of the street, and there's a lot of traffic up and down there. My brother lives in Atlanta, there's only a sidewalk on one side. My sister lives in Quail Park, there's not sidewalks on either side. Again, there's a very adequate sidewalk there, and it doesn't, you know, and it goes into grass, and part of that property is owned by the city. Again, we're not trying to avoid our responsibility, but we'd like to spend our resources in a, in a more viable manner, and delay the timeline on it to when it's more practical to upgrade that area. The slope is not in compliance with ADA, but I also will add that when I was at the University of Iowa, I was on the first floor at the University of Iowa in Burge, and we worked with a couple guys that were in chairs, and in fact, it was, it was my room that was specifically assigned to help those guys, and I have a lot of experience in those chairs, both electric and, and manual chairs, and the, the slope that, you saw the picture of the sidewalk from the, that angle, is not severe at all. And if they had to get somewhere, they would have to cross that street, they'd have to go across Beaver, which is at a substantial slope. So again, I'm not asking that you say, oh, you just don't do it, because I think you have to comply with federal regulations with the ADA. I'm just asking that, that you postpone it to a more reasonable time to where, if you truly want to make that street accessible, and the city wants to invest money in that sidewalk on the property that you own, accessibility up on the corner, that you postpone it to that time.
Pat, does, does, from the city's perspective, do we have any leeway as far as ADA compliance?
We have granted time between the fall inspection until now because of winter weather conditions that be, to come into compliance. So we can provide an extension, you know, when there's compelling reason. Normally, it's a 90-day cure or there's a civil infraction. So to go beyond this, we haven't done that beyond the weather element here.
And those are federal? And those are federal requirements? I mean, we don't have a lot of say in whether...
I think that the federal requirements would come into play, but we're operating under municipal code provisions here that preclude a slope of that degree.
I guess, why has this not come to light before?
We have sidewalk inspectors that inspect sidewalks throughout the city. We do it on a complaint basis. We've had this issue before where we've had slope on sidewalk. We also have spalling, we have vertical separation, horizontal separation, and we handle these on a routine basis. There's an inspection procedure that the city clerk manages for us. And we do have people who appeal those inspections, and they go before that. And they are, it is ruled based on the ordinance that it's noncompliant, and they'll have to be compliant. And those that do not after 90 days can be taken to court in a civil infraction and then compelled to do it by the court. So we have this as a routine procedure here. I think the request here that's kind of different, that we don't see as often, is a request, again, I anticipated it was to remove the sidewalk.
That, that was an idea. I mean, there are places, the city doesn't have a sidewalk a couple, couple properties down. Why, why do we have to have a sidewalk if the city doesn't? That was also a consideration, but I thought, you know, the concrete's there, it's not that bad. And again, we're not trying to avoid our obligation, but, but it'd be very difficult for someone in a chair to use it anyway. It'd just be, be light logic to me.
Do you care if I, I know, I know the DeMarco family's, and I know this duplex property and, and my thought is this. Every, every argument that I think Pat could make is reasonable and right, and I think he has backed up our ordinance really well. It's, just doesn't make sense to me when the sidewalk stops for a quarter mile probably at the edge of his property, that, that we would redesign the slope of it out of what would happen at the next property and, you know, and further down. And it, it seems slightly hypocritical that we're a property owner along there, and we aren't investing in a, in a sidewalk to help people, they have to cross the street. I'd like to refer it to the city manager's office and the city attorney.
I, I think we, we could get a quick update on this. In full respect of you, Mr. DeMarco, I, I have some concern regarding liability. We've had notification to you, we've had a complaint.
Yes.
And I don't know, and I'm going to ask Legal to give us sort of an opinion on this, where we stand in regard to our, our liability.
Sure.
And letting you slide on this. So, Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. With respect to premises liability or sidewalk liability, there could potentially be a claim once we've noticed a deficiency with the, with respect to the city code that sets the standard of, of care. Once we've noticed that, and then if we don't follow through, especially after there's been notice and a procedure started to enforce the code, if we don't, and then someone is injured because of, if they can show that there's a proximate cause related to the slope, that could be a potential liability problem for the city. With respect to the ADA, once...
As well as Mr. DeMarco?
As well as Mr. DeMarco. With respect to the ADA, once repairs end or reconstruction or remodeling is undertaken, once that happens, you have to do it in a manner that is consistent and compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so to the extent that we're already requiring this in other areas, it could pose a problem. And I don't know that, as Mr. DeMarco suggested, simply waiting until there's some additional sidewalk constructed, I don't know that that's actually going to meet the standards required by the Americans with Disabilities Act in terms of compliance with work that's already begun by the city.
My only thought to that is, I'm curious about who could have complained it. There's only another property or two on one side of us that goes into the grass. Secondly, if you'll bring up my, my slide that's up right now over here, this was marked up at the same time that our property was marked up.
Well, let me, before we go down on debate on this.
Sure.
I think the fact that we've been noticed, we had a complaint, it doesn't much matter who filed it or what reason they filed it for. We went out and found a deficiency, if I understand it. So I think that that debate's kind of over.
I wasn't curious specifically as to who. I was just, was, I guess, questioning the legitimacy of a complaint at that, that property.
Well, but we found a deficiency, is that correct, Pat?
Okay.
So, I mean, that...
Okay. This slide that's up right now is, was marked up at the same time. And if you'll notice what it says in red there on the left-hand side, it says "City." It was marked up at the same time, it hasn't been taken care of either. And that's a city-owned piece of the sidewalk that's half a block up or just another...
I'm sure Pat will have that done tomorrow.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Excuse me, just one second. We do have sections of sidewalk that residents will see marked as "City." It's where we take responsibility for a street tree or something that may have roots that may have upheaval that section of sidewalk, and then we replace that. We work with the property owners. They do, want to do it all in one section, we'll pay them the appropriate amount to their contract, or otherwise, we'll take care of our section, property owners take care of theirs.
Okay.
Well, having heard all this discussion, I understand the legal issues, but I guess I also, from a common sense, that, that's where I'm having the difficulty.
Our quotes were between $3,000 and $5,000 to replace that piece. I mean, it's...
What if you just take it out?
Well, if...
Would you...
But my question, if, this is why I reconsidered that. That's a good question. If we took it out, and then let's say the city and the property owners to the northwest of us then put in sidewalk, and the city wanted to make it accessible, then we'd be putting it all back in again. The slope's pretty...
Based on the budget that the city's working under currently, I don't really see that happening.
You don't think that's going to happen tomorrow?
Would be my guess.
Yeah. I mean, we'd love to take it out. It's so close also to the street. When it gets plowed, it's like, you know, taking out the end of your driveway for a whole, a whole sidewalk. It's really, really hard to maintain from, from a snow standpoint, but...
I would just refer it back to the city manager and Legal to make sure that we've done everything. And I understand the legal issues that we're dealing with here, and I'm sensitive to that. But if the option would be to remove it, that, where there could be some level of guarantee from the city that we're not going to come back in the near future and ask them to put it in, I, I don't sense that we're looking at anything in that area.
Well, I think there's an issue with removing it because the amount of requests I get for sidewalk around town, I know out in Ward Four on Park Avenue, East, East 14th, a month doesn't go by that I don't hear about a sidewalk out there, and I'm hearing it all the time. And I think this just flies in the face of people that don't have sidewalks. You know, we should, I think we should be working towards filling the city in with sidewalks, not removing them.
I, I guess I'm, I'm with Christine. I guess I would like to just refer it back to the city manager and Legal to decide what remedies are appropriate or plausible. And, I mean, leave, leave the decision up, up to you guys based on kind of the legal ramifications.
Is there a time deadline?
The, the time deadline, deadline is coming up, yeah. It's, it's actually, I think, at the end of this month it needed to be repaired, or there was a...
The end of April?
Yes. Or there was a $750 civil penalty in addition to...
So would we be sensitive to that?
If referred back, certainly, to city manager, we would take the time to study this before we took action.
And by the way, it would be a report back to you at this table, so you could take whatever action you thought was appropriate based on the information you had in front of you.
And I would just tell you, before we vote, that I'm really hesitant, given notice, and how long ago did this notice go out?
We inspected in the fall, and then because of weather conditions, extended it to the end of April to have compliance.
Okay. And I'm just, we've given it an extension. I want to make sure that this is resolved to our satisfaction, remove us from liability in the near future. Whatever it is, it's resolved, and I'd like to, so whatever resolution staff comes up with, I want to make sure we fit in that timeline that gets us away from...
I would think we can have it come back in the, at the next council meeting. I mean, I can't imagine that it was...
Is this something that needs to come back to council? I mean, I think whatever...
From what?
The attorney decides that...
I'm not quite...
Well, I think if your, if your decision is to take it out entirely, you're, you're making a decision about that stretch of the city, and essentially ought to be predicated on the fact that you don't want sidewalk there, you don't see it in the future. If you think at some point there's going to be sidewalk, you're best really advised to, to put it in or get some provision for that. But it's conceivable that when we look at it, we'll conclude that there's never going to be a sidewalk there, and the appropriate thing is to...
Yeah, it's kind of a weird situation. I, personally, I like sidewalk in any neighborhood. I don't even like sidewalks on one side or the other. And it's there. But again, two doors down, it goes into city property, there's no sidewalk there. So if you had a chair, you wouldn't be going across that grass very comfortably at all.
Well, here's the other question.
But I understand that's a legal question.
If our issue is that we need to be ADA compliant, I don't think taking the sidewalk out makes it more compliant. And I'd like to, I mean, the city attorney could answer that question, but...
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, that's, that's an excellent point. If it makes it less compliant, then we've got inconsistency about another half a mile up the road there.
Well, I, I think one of, Mr. Mayor, I think one of the important things to remember here is that, and I haven't researched this specific issue, but we'll be happy to get that done for you very quickly. However, the, the point of the ADA is not necessarily to require lots of affirmative steps, but when steps are undertaken affirmatively to repair or replace or address, they have to be done in a compliant manner. And I think the issue here is that removal is probably not going to be a compliant manner. We'll, we'll get a response to you as quickly as we can. But taking that, taking that out is, is probably not going to be compliant, would be my, my observation at this point.
And I understand that. I think at some level, Mr. DeMarco probably doesn't like that answer, but probably agree, understands it. So I guess my motion would be to refer to the city manager and Legal to see what remedies are appropriate based on ADA and our city code.
And...
And if there, if, as Mr. Lester suggests, there's nothing that can be done to change it, then I don't think it needs to come back to the council.
I, Mr. Grease, I would agree that if, if, if there's no remedy and the solution is to put the sidewalk in as originally requested by Public Works, then it wouldn't need to come back here. But I think you need to be advised of that, and we'll do that. And then if you feel that you want more consideration, we can take it up at that time.
I might just make one more point here, if I could. Could I have my map back here for a minute? Just to make sure it's clear is, and I think Mr. DeMarco has pointed this out, there's one sidewalk that's beyond his property here, that goes beyond him and serves this resident.
Correct.
So that would have to be addressed as well.
Yeah, I don't think their, their property, their property doesn't have any markings. This property up here has a lot of markings.
I was thinking from a continuity standpoint.
Yeah, you couldn't leave that piece of sidewalk just...
Oh, I see. If we, if you allowed us to take ours out, then we'd have a piece of sidewalk.
Okay.
But, but you've got a great big piece of grass in the middle of...
Can he, can he make his compliant without the neighbor to the northwest fixing theirs? It would seem to me to fix a grade issue, you're going to have to start it or finish it at a different level than it is right now.
I've, I've got a question for Pat on that. Yeah. Well, I think, is the slope side to side towards the curb?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it exceeds the quarter inch per foot toward, toward the street. But as I was showing you before, I mean, when you look at it, it's, it's almost imperceivable that, I mean...
Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, at this point, we've been noticed, somebody complained, we went out, looked at it, it doesn't meet the standard. So I don't know that we have any leeway.
Yeah. Is it possible, then, to get an extension for, say, a month or so to get it taken care of?
Well, it's going to be referred back to the city manager and Legal.
Oh, I see. And then...
It'll follow his direction.
Follow it, okay.
Yeah.
Very good, then. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming down.
Seven yes.
All right. That completes communications and reports. Now let's quickly go back to item 62, which is a city manager recommendation regarding receive and file a report regarding the contractor qualification questionnaire, Council Communication Number 11-239. Mr. Manager, would you like to make a couple of comments on that?
I certainly would. Mr. Mayor, council members, here's the short version. At your last meeting, you referred this issue back to us. Jab Brewer and Engineering and Jeff Lester and Legal have spent considerable effort going back and looking at what's happened in the past. What you have is a relatively complex issue. The council took it up in the year 2000, and then again in 2006, so there is a good deal of history. There is also the matter of some legal action that had been taken previously that we need to review, and frankly, I think you need to be aware of as well. It is clear to me that you probably can put in place some sort of a procedure that's akin to what you had asked for. My recommendation, long story short, is that, given the importance of the issue and the complexity, and not only on the substance of it, but in the matter of implementation and how we carry it out, that this ought to be scheduled for a workshop, at which time we can bring it back and have a fuller discussion about what might happen and what the implications are to the city and to the bidding process, should you implement it. It is entirely possible to do this, I believe, based on the prior work, but there are some important issues, and we would be happy to prepare that homework for you and put together a comprehensive presentation at a workshop in the near future. So, long story short, that would be my recommendation to you.
I'll move that we receive and file this and ask that it be expedited as quickly as possible and brought back to a workshop. I think it's extremely important because as elected officials, one thing we're charged with is investing the residents' taxes at the best return we can. And if we're receiving low-quality work, which I believe in a lot of cases we are, we're not investing it properly.
Seven yes.
Item 63 is approving, initiating an amendment to the zoning ordinance to prohibit freestanding liquor stores in C3, C3A, C3B, C3R districts and establishing a temporary moratorium on new freestanding liquor stores in these districts. I was the one that put this on our agenda this evening. We were at the East Village meeting last week, and we had a considerable amount of discussion about this item and issue. And we also related to the, to the other issues, Christine and I talked about it earlier today, that we faced in, all over downtown Des Moines, and I think it's a broader issue that, that deserves quite a bit of discussion and, as to how we handle sale of, of liquors in, in downtown Des Moines. If anybody has any other thoughts, I would suggest that we initiate, but refer it to the city manager and Legal to, actually, we would move this forward this evening, but then we would refer it to have discussion with the neighbors and all interested parties, whether it's East Village or all over downtown, how we handle these issues. Because I know we've got a couple more opportunities in other areas of downtown that we're going to have to face in the near future, so...
So are we looking at a 90-day moratorium?
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I also attended that meeting, and there's what, about 20, 25 people at that meeting, and I didn't hear one that didn't voice concerns about liquor stores in the historic East Village. And I'm really pleased to see that this has been expanded to all the C3 zoning areas downtown, and I would definitely support it.
Did we already move it? I'll move. Seven yes.
For those that are sitting in the audience that may have wanted to discuss, I think what we want to do now, we have put a moratorium on this essentially for 90 days. What we want to do is have a broader discussion with all interested parties regarding sale of liquors in, in downtown Des Moines and how we might handle that moving into the future. And we're going to have to bring Legal into it to see what the parameters are legally, whether it's with the state law or what, what it is that we can do. But that at least gives us a little opportunity to have that, that broader discussion. And appreciate all of you that have registered a concern about this opportunity moving forward. So we'll, we hope that you all attend that, that discussion, and we'll try to include everybody, let you know when it's going to take place. But we ought to begin very short-term, and I'll ask the manager and our city legal to, and any others... and any other appropriate staff, to begin to put together a meeting to have this discussion. So we've got a 7-0 vote, 90 days. All right. Item 64 is approving a submittal of a re, to revitalize Iowa's sound economy. That's a RISE grant application to Iowa Department of Transportation for the Southeast Connector, Southeast 14th Street to Southeast 30th Street for $32,500,000. Council Communication Number 11-233. Mr. Manager, did you want to make a couple of quick comments on that item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the priorities for the city as established by this council has been the expediting of the construction of Southeast Connector, and one of the challenges is always finding the money to do it. There is a great program offered by the City of Iowa called RISE. It's a way to fund street projects. We funded much of ML King is an example with RISE dollars. This is a proposal to submit an application to IDOT for $32.5 million of RISE funds to help in the construction of that project. If we got all those dollars, it would certainly expedite things, and we're hopeful, of course, in doing that. I should also add parenthetically that the mayor and I have also made contacts with some of the administration people in Washington, Department of Transportation in particular, and we're working with them as well to seek federal dollars directly from the federal government and also through the MPO here. So hopefully with all of these funding possibilities in play, that they'll come through and we'll be able to move the project along quickly. This is a very important ingredient. We ask for your approval in submitting the application.
I'd like, I'd like to say the only way this could be any better is if it was doubled and we were going out to Pleasant Hill. And, you know, there's additional benefits to this. One that I hear a lot about is the bike trail that would tie Pat Dory into Gailey Wilson. And I know everything I've seen in the past showed the bike trail being integrated along with this. And I really hope we have good luck on this and we get this money.
I certainly hope we continue to apply for all funds that are, might be available for this, because we need to continue to get it out to the Kemen so they can continue with their progress of adding for initial jobs added into our city. I think this is the right move, and I'm certainly going to support it.
I'll move 64.
Seven yes.
All right, we have one extra item. It's on a request from Paul Kester to rezone 1704 High Street from C2 general retail and highway-oriented commercial to NPC neighborhood pedestrian commercial to develop a 21-unit apartment building. And that, Ms. Hensley, that will come before the council on the 9th?
Correct. And they have had meetings with neighbors, the neighborhood group. Two items I just appreciate that could come forward. There's been some discrepancy on the amount of parking spaces that were, he indicated a neighborhood meeting, I think it was going to be 29, but before P&amp;Z, it ended up being 23. So if I could just have some clarification in the information that comes to us. And then from traffic and transportation, looking at a stop sign at 15th and High, that's been an ongoing intersection problem area that we've had. So if we could have recommendations on that. I'll move extra item one.
Any discussion? The item's been moved.
Seven yes.
All right, could we have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as Board of Health? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
We now sit as Board of Health. Item one is approving the legal department to proceed with court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisance at 802 East County Line Road, Lot 175. It's a mobile home. Title holders are Arc Communities 16 LLC and Kathy and Randall and Sherry Kentwell, the mortgage holders, US Bank National Association. It's a memo from them on that. Is there anybody here to speak on this particular item?
I'll move.
All right. It has been moved, seeing no one to speak on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn? Do you need to speak at this, or do you want to just speak after?
After.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We sit adjourned. City manager has a quick comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just wanted to let you know that we have received news that the Iowa League of Cities has decided to ask Alan McKinley from the City of Des Moines to sit on its Board of Directors. Alan has graciously agreed to serve in that capacity. It is a very good thing for the city to have this. Alan will do a splendid job representing the city on the league, and I think will be a great resource for that group. Simply wanted to let you know, I think they actually take formal action on the nomination tomorrow or the next day later this week, and just wanted to let you know.
I thank you all.
Good night, Galen.
Thank you.